Hey everyone, welcome to our session eleven for our Bible study. We are going to be studying Luke chapter eleven today. And we want to welcome our friends on Periscope today. We're also joining us, we will continuing, we'll be continuing our intimacy series here as we're studying Luke chapter eleven. And I pray that you've been having a blessed week. And I'm excited because here we are in literally a year, a day before New Year's Eve. And we're studying the Bible together and we're getting the word of God in and we're still studying, we're going on strong. As we want to know Jesus more, as we want to know more about Him. So let's continue into our study before we start, let's say a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you so much for an amazing year. We thank you for all of the blessings, all the trials, the tribulations, Father. All the moments of difficulty, Father, that has shaped us into who we are today, Lord. And we are ready to go into this new year with a new beginning and with a new, um, new mind, ready to trust in you and believe in you and all that you said that you would do in our lives, Lord. And as we are going to continue to study, as we're going to continue to study more about you and learning more about your word, Lord, we ask that you give us your Holy Spirit. May you continue to bless God and may you dwell with us and give us enlightenment and may the words that we read penetrate into our hearts. And may we live what we read. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. So guys, here we go, Luke chapter eleven, let's go right into it. So the last week when we were studying, we were talking about Mary and Martha and how Jesus was actually sitting at the feet of Jesus. Um, Mary was sitting at the feet of Jesus and she was getting the opportunity to actually listen to what Jesus had to say. She sat there, she intently listened to what, what he was saying. And then Martha on the other side, she was busy trying to make sure that Jesus was comfortable, that Jesus had everything that he needed. And Jesus was saying, Mary chose the good part. Mary was the one who sat there and listened to what he had to say. And that's the whole goal of what, the purpose of Jesus coming. Jesus wanted people to be there that would listen to him. People want, he wants people to sit at his feet. He wants people to take time and get to know him and have a relationship and just hear what he has to say concerning their lives. And so we learned that and now we're going to go into Luke chapter eleven, which talks about the model prayer. And we see that Jesus is going to teach us how to pray. And we know the, the familiar Lord's Prayer where we've normally been, been saying, you know, our Father which art in heaven. But let's go into this and see what and how this came about. And so verse one says, "Now it came to pass, as he was praying in a certain place, when he ceased, that one of his disciples said to him, 'Lord, teach us to pray, as John also taught his disciples.'" So John the Baptist's disciples also were, uh, being taught how to pray. And so Jesus has his disciples and they understand that the forerunner was John the Baptist and he was preparing the way of the Lord. He was preparing the way of Jesus Christ. And so now they want to know how to pray. They want to know how to talk to God. And so he says to them, "When you pray," in verse two, "our Father which art in heaven." So we see here that Jesus is saying, "When you start praying, say our Father in heaven." And it's to remind us, when we say Father God, or when we say Father, it's to remind us who we are, it's our identity. And recognizing that when we talk to God, that he's our Father, that he's not just another person, that he's not a God who sleeps, that he's not a, he's not just some statue. He's a living God and he's our Father and he's actually in relationship with us and we actually know him. So next we have, "How will be thy, be your name?" How will be your name, meaning amazing you are, how great you are and your name is great. And his name is something that we shouldn't just, you know, bypass. "Your kingdom come." Your kingdom come, meaning whatever God has in heaven is going to come down on here on earth. So we're saying that your kingdom come and your will be done. Meaning that we're saying that our lives are not our own and that the kingdom of God is what is important. The kingdom of God, whatever plan God had in the kingdom, whatever, um, desire he had, whatever will he has, that these things would manifest on earth. And it says, "On earth as it is in heaven," which is what we just stated, "give us this, give us day by day our daily bread." So we know to ask God for the things that we need, meaning the food that we're going to need. You can ask him for your daily bread. "Give us this day, our daily bread," is what it says. And then it says, "Forgive us our sins." So we're also asking for forgiveness and we're also, for we also forgive everyone who is indebted to us. And we should also forgive those who have done something to us. "And do not lead us into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one." And so here we're letting God know that we understand that there is an enemy out there that we have to fight and that there are difficulties out there and there are, um, going to be days that we can't make it with. You know, every day that we need to make it, we need to be able to have his presence with us. "Do not lead us into temptation and deliver us from the evil one." So we recognizing right then and there that there's an evil one that's after us. There's a, 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 a spirit out there that doesn't like us. And so we're saying, "God, deliver us from the evil one." And so that's what Jesus' model prayer was for us. And I can be honest, like ever since I've been reading these prayers, this particular prayer, I've tried to model my prayer life around this specific prayer. And I'll start, and I won't say these exact words, but I'll look at this literally as a model, that I'll start talking to God and I will start, I'll address him and I'll magnify his name. And I will tell him that his will be done, his kingdom come, whatever he wants from me, let it be done. And then I'll go into asking for forgiveness. Because sometimes you want to be able to have a clean heart before you talk to God. You want your spirit to be clean. So you go to him and you ask him to forgive yourself for your sins. You don't have to pray the way that I pray, but that's the way that I've been doing. And then from there I will say, "Whatever I need." And I'll say, "God, this is what I need, this is what I'm going through at this moment, help me." And then I'll ask, you know, God with whatever issues that I'm going through. And then after that I will go ahead, you can, I think, when you start off talking about how your relationship with God and you praise him and you magnify him and you go into different other things. But it's good to end your prayer off, understanding that you, you're thankful, that you're grateful and that you're not praying in the sense where you're just needing and you're wanting, wanting, wanting. Because the Bible does say that he knows our needs and our wants and our desires. He knows everything that's within us, he knows our hearts. So we don't need to plead with God about the things that we need. All we need to do is just have a relationship with him. Ask him how he's doing and have a conversation with him and see what's on his heart and allow him to speak to you as well. So we're going to continue with the chapter and eleven verse five talks about, it's a, it's a parable where a friend comes to another friend in the middle of the night. And so it says, "Which of you shall have a friend and go to him at midnight and say to him, 'Friend, lend me three loaves.' For a friend of mine has come to set, to see me on his journey and I have nothing for him. And he will answer from within and say, 'Do not trouble me. The door is now shut and my children are with me in bed, I cannot rise and give to you. I say to you, though he will not rise and give to him, because he is his friend, yet because of his persistence, he will rise and give him as many as he needs.'" So this particular friend, there's, in the middle of the night, this friend is needing something and they want to be able to help another person that's come their way, but they don't have to give. But they ask in the middle of the night. And so Jesus is saying that this friend is persistent and they continue to knock on the door. Now, they come, the friend answers the door, the other friend that lives where they live, they answer the door and they say, "It's late, my children are sleeping, my wife is sleeping, I cannot help you right now. You know, come back." Let's say that's what they said. And so this friend is literally trying to understand why is this person, like put yourself in a scenario where somebody comes to you in the middle of the night and they're asking you for something and they're your friend. Now you already said no to them. Are you going to give them what they need? And if they don't get what they need, now they consistently come back to you to, to still ask and they still knock on the door. Are you going to say no to this friend? And Jesus is saying, "I say to you, though he will not rise and give to him, because he is his friend, yet because of his persistence, he will rise and give him as many as he needs." So this is a friend situation and the friend does give the friend what they need. But now Jesus is saying, "So I say to you, ask and it will be given to you. Seek and you will find, knock and it will be opened to you. For everyone who asks receives, and he who seeks finds, and to him who knocks it will be opened. If a son asks for bread from any father among you, will he give him a stone? Or if he asks for a fish, will he give him a serpent instead of a fish? A serpent instead of a fish? Or if he asks for egg, will he offer him a scorpion? If you then being evil know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will our heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to those who ask him?" So here you are seeing that God is saying, "Ask me and I'll give it to you. Whatever it is that you're needing at the moment, ask for you." But when we studied this, my friends and I last weekend, because we studied, we do the week before, when we studied this, we recognized that Jesus is saying, "Ask me for a car, ask me for a house, ask me for a TV, a flat screen, ask me for all the things of this world and I'll give it to you." Yes, Jesus will give you what you need and everything that you ask for, he would give it to you because he is your Father. And as it says here, he would never give you anything that would hurt you. But understand this, there are some things that we ask for in life that will hurt us. Maybe that car will hurt us, maybe that job will hurt us, maybe that particular relationship will hurt us. And God will deny it because he knows that as a father, I'm not going to give you something that's going to hurt you. What we recognize in reading this, when you read verse thirteen, it says, "If you then being evil," meaning we are, we're not perfect, we have tendencies to be evil. We are the sons of God, but we tend to, we, our flesh, our nature is evil. If us being evil know to give good gifts to our own children and we do right by those who ask us, how much more will your heavenly Father, the God in heaven, how much more will he give? Key word that he's about to say, listen to this. He will give the Holy Spirit to those who ask him. And I think a lot of people, when they see this, "Ask and it will be given to you, seek and ye shall find," recognize that Jesus was focusing on the Holy Spirit in this chapter, in this section. He was focusing on giving you more of him. If we would get our hearts ready to receive more of God, more of the Holy Spirit, more of his power, there's nothing that we would be asking for or questioning or wanting in life that we wouldn't be able to receive with the Holy Spirit within us. For we know that it is now unto him who is able to, to do exceedingly abundantly. Unto him, if we have God, we can do all things. If we have Christ, we can do all things. So if we have and we, we understand that we have the Holy Spirit, we have the opportunity to ask for the Holy Spirit, why not ask for more of that? Why not ask for more of Jesus? Why not ask for more of God? Why not ask for more of Jesus in our lives, to look more like him and to represent him? And to have a life like his? Because Jesus, if you look back at his life, his life was not a luxurious life. He said that foxes had holes and birds had nests to lay their heads. The son of man had nowhere to lay his head. Jesus was not rich. Jesus was born to, uh, poor people. Mary and Joseph were poor. So we have to recognize that he had everything he needed, all he needed was Jesus. He needed, all he needed, excuse me, was God. And if he had his Father, that's all he ever needed in his life. So I wanted you guys to recognize that section, that God is saying, "Ask for more of my Holy Spirit and you'll see higher life." Miracles happen when you have the Holy Spirit in your life. And that's what God is wanting us to ask for. Verses fourteen to twenty-three, it's talking about, uh, uh, tongue tied. So it's talking about, um, demon, uh, people who say that Jesus had a demon working in him because of the power in him. And so we just read previously, I have a lot of arms talking today, talking with my hands. So you saw that previously, we just said, "The Holy Spirit is what God is saying we should ask for, okay?" So now it's saying verse fourteen, "And he was casting out a demon and it was mute. And so it was when the demon had gone out and the mute spoke and the multitudes marveled. So the mute spoke and, but some of them said, 'He cast out demons by bells above, the ruler of demons. Others testing him sought from him a sign from heaven. But he knowing their thoughts said to them, 'Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation and a house divided against a house falls.'" So if Satan is also divided against himself, how will his kingdom stand? Because you say, "I cast out demons by bells above." Jesus is saying, "How can I be doing anything? How can the works done in me? How is the exceedingly abundantly that you see flowing right now? How is that coming from bells above, the devil, the enemy, Satan? We're not on the same team." Jesus is saying that, "I am not on the same team as the devil. I don't do what the devil does. The devil is on another team." And I'm not, why, why would two, a house divide itself? Why would we be on the same team? Why would we be on the same team and I'm fighting against him? How does that make sense? That's what he's saying to them. And he said, "But if I cast out demons with the finger of God, surely the de, the kingdom of God has come upon you. And when a strong man fully armed guards his own palace, his goods are in peace. But when a stronger than he comes upon him and overcomes him, he takes from him all his armor in which he trusted and divides his spoils. He who is not with me is against me, and he who does not gather with me scatters." So what Jesus is saying here is, he who is, first off, let's go, let's go from verse twenty-three. He who is not with me is against me. The devil is not with Jesus. Jesus and the devil are, will never be on the same team. Good and evil, they're two, they're opposites, they will never be the same. And so what Jesus is saying to them is, bells above is not the spirit that comes that within me and I'm able to do what I do. Now unto him that who is able to do exceedingly means, it is the spirit of God that you see working and, and healing the sick and being able to allow the, the mute to speak. I heal because I have the spirit of God dwelling within me. It is not the enemy, it is not the devil that does these works. And so that's the reason why it was important prior to him and this story coming about, Jesus had to say that how, how much more will the heavenly Father give you his Holy Spirit? If we ask for the Holy Spirit in our lives, God will automatically give it to you. He would never say no to you because you are able to do more than you can ask or think. And just like Jesus was able to do abundantly, heal, he would cast out demons and he would do so many great things for the kingdom of God. And here he's saying, "The kingdom of God is upon them and they didn't even know it." They couldn't even recognize mercy, that Jesus was at their feet, that the Messiah was there in front of them. They missed it. Because they were looking for it in a specific way, because of appearance, they missed it. So let's continue, verse twenty-four says, "When an unclean spirit goes out of a man, he goes through dry places seeking rest and finding none. He says, 'I will return to my house from which I came.'" An evil spirit, when it comes into someone, it's, it comes because there's a dry place. Understand that Jesus is rep, is represented as a river. He flows. It is, it is a moisture that comes and flows within our lives. When we have the Holy Spirit within us, it's a, a, a river and an overflow. It is a flowing that consistently happens within our lives. When evil spirits come in, they come in because it's dry, there's nothing there. It's perfect for them, they can rest there. But if the Holy Spirit is already in there and they see residue, they see a dew, they're not going to sit and dwell within that place. And so this is what that verse was trying to explain, is when an unclean spirit goes out of a man, he will go through dry places looking for rest and then he'll try to come back to the house. If the house doesn't have the Holy Spirit, then he can settle there. So we need to always remember that we need God, we need Jesus, we need the Holy Spirit so that nothing can rest unlike God within us. When we continue, verse twenty-five, "And when he comes, he finds it swept and put in order. And then he goes and takes with him." So now if Jesus comes and, so basically, when he comes, he finds it swept and put in order. Let's say someone tries to do it themselves and they try to get themselves, their lives together. And they're trying to get intimate with Christ, but instead of asking Christ to dwell within them or the Holy Spirit to come in, they're doing things or works or they're trying to do things in their own strength and they don't ask God to help them. When this demon or this unclean spirit or whatever it is, because it could be jealousy, it could be greed, it could be fornication, it could be pettiness, whatever it is that you have within you. Let's say that thing is trying to come back, but you were trying to get rid of it on your own and you didn't try to ask Jesus to help you do it. Then that spirit will go and take with him seven other spirits, more wicked than himself, and they enter and dwell there and the last state of that man is worse than the first. Which is why it's important for us to need the Holy Spirit, it's important for us to need God. It is important for us to need Jesus Christ in our lives, to do what we can't do. Jesus did everything he did, not because he was God, because he was full man, he was flesh. He was a man. And so he had God living inside of him, he had the Holy Spirit living inside of him. That's why he was able to heal the sick. He was able to do all sorts of things and we can do them too, if only we would allow the Holy Spirit and the Lord to dwell within us. Verse twenty-seven talks about keeping the word from twenty-seven to twenty-eight. "And it happened, as he spoke things, that a certain woman from the crowd raised her voice and said to him, 'Blessed is the womb that bore you and the breast which nursed you.'" So this woman is focused on the fact that Jesus was, was a great man and she loved everything she saw. But she was, she wasn't even focused on him, she went back to Mary, thinking of the mother. Wow, whoever's your mama, she must be lucky, is what she's saying. But Jesus responds and says, verse twenty-eight, "More than that, blessed are those who hear the word of God and keep it." Because here Jesus is trying to speak to them about how their hearts need to be ready, how their, they need to be able to be willing to receive the Holy Spirit and allow the Lord to work in their lives. And this woman is focused on where he came from. She's not focused on what he's doing or saying at that moment, she's focused on the past. And Jesus is saying, "No, blessed are those who hear what I say. Blessed are those who hear the word of God and keep it and actually do it." Now these people were just seeking a sign and they were really wanting to see something, I don't know, something extraordinary to prove that Jesus really was the son of God. So now they're really questioning him and they want to know, where are you getting all this stuff from? Because you can't just be, you know, hocus pocus and you're, you're healing people, that doesn't make sense. They didn't believe, they didn't have faith. And so while the crowds were thickly gathered together, he began to say, "This is an evil generation. It seeks a sign and no sign will be given to it except the sign of Jonah the prophet." And he went and explained and said, "For as Jonah became a sign to the Ninevites, so also the son of man will be to this generation. The queen of the south will rise up in the judgment with the men of this generation and condemn them. For when she came from the ends of the earth to hear the wisdom of Solomon, and indeed a greater than Solomon is here." So Jonah was sent out to, to save the people of Nineveh. And now Jesus is here to save the world. And he's saying, "A person greater than Solomon is here." I'm sorry guys. So a person greater than Solomon is here. "And the men of Nineveh will rise up in the judgment," verse thirty-two, "with this generation and condemn it. For they repented at the preaching of Jonah, and indeed a greater than Jonah is here." Jesus is saying, "I came." Jonah went to Ninevites, the people received every word he had to say, they did and repented and they turned their lives around. And here now he is here in front of them and they want a sign. They didn't ask, Ninevites didn't ask for a sign. They just, they were scared, they repented, they wanted to get their lives right with the Lord. And now they're asking him for a sign and he's greater than Jonah. Verse thirty-three, "No one has a lit, has, he has, no one, when he has lit a lamp, puts it in a secret place or under a basket, but on a lampstand, that those who come in may see the light. The lamp of the body is the eye. Therefore, when your eye is good, your whole body also is full of light. But when your eye is bad, your body also is full of darkness." Right here, Jesus is saying that the reason why we can't get him, we can't see him, why we don't want the Holy Spirit, why we don't desire God, why we don't desire to pray, why we don't desire to fast, why we don't desire to worship, why we don't desire anything godly, is because of what we see. I literally just heard a sermon and I was listening to it and it was saying that, "You shall be what you behold. What you see is what you are, what you watch is what you are." So if we watch garbage, if we look at things that are nothing like God, that's what we want to become. So if we sit there and we have, uh, let's say we got a book with all the Bentley's in them, all the Maseratis and all of the, um, the Porsches. We're looking at them consistently every single day, we flip through these books every single day. And that's all we ever watch, that's all we ever look at. These things consume us to the point where then, when we are not looking at that book, that's what we're thinking about. That's where we want to go. We're eating, we want the Porsche. We're driving in our hoopy, we want the Porsche. But we have something to drive, but that's what we want. If we're consistently digesting, looking at, watching, we continue to pour ourselves into things of this world. If we watch the garbage on TV, scandal, all those shows, I don't even know what's hip anymore because I had to give these things up, the Lord told me to give them up a long time ago. But when we consume ourselves in these things and you look at other people's lives and you compare your life, your lives to other people's lives and you see that they're making it, they have money, they're balling out of control, you don't have anything. And you look at these things, your eyes will literally direct you, inside internally will say, "That's what I want. That's what I need to go after, that's what I need to work hard for." And will no longer want to work or walk towards the kingdom of God. The kingdom road will no longer be something that we desire because we're so focused on the things that we see. So if we look at the things of this world all the time, if we look at vacations and we're looking at spas and we're looking at things that have nothing to do with Jesus Christ, that's what our, our, our minds, our hearts and our souls will desire. And we will no longer want anything to do with Jesus. And that is the danger. And Jesus is saying that the lamp of our bodies, the lamp, the direction, in other words, the first thing that our body, our mind, everything, the first thing that we, that turns on the signal is our eyes. So if our eyes are leading us, then we need to feed our eyes with good things. And there's a song that says, "Turn your eyes upon Jesus, look full to his wonderful face and the things of earth will grow strangely dim." That hymnal is literally letting us know that if we keep our eyes on Jesus, if we keep our eyes straight on the cross, if we keep our eyes straight on the Bible and the word of God, if we continuously to seek after the things of God and we pray and we seek after him and we ask God for the Holy Spirit, we will become exactly what God intended us to become. And that could be anything, but we won't know unless we take the time to hear from him. "Therefore, take heed that the light which is in you is not of darkness." So if we have people that we just admire, we're looking at people from Hollywood and people from, you know, the, the, the labels, the, the celebrities, the people that, you know, rap, all these people. If those are the people that we're looking after, that's what we'll want to become. And if we don't take heed, their darkness, because they're headed in the wrong direction. The last thing they're thinking about is Jesus. So if we're following people that are going in the wrong direction, that's the direction we're going to be in eventually. "If then your whole body is full of life, light, having no part dark, the whole body will be full of light, as when the bright shining of a lamp gives you light." And so if we want to be light in this world and if we want to represent Jesus Christ, then we need to fill ourselves up with light so that we can, we know that the absence of, of, of light is darkness. So if we don't have Jesus, then we're dark. If we don't have, and we know that Jesus is, is the light of the world. In John eight verse twelve, it says that, "I am the light of the world." And Jesus is the light of the world, that's who we need. And if we want to become light, And if we wanna become light and we wanna, we wanna radiant, we wanna give off the glow, we wanna give off all of the rays that Jesus has, then we need more of him. And so the remainder of the chapter talks about Pharisees and the lawyers. And they try to challenge him specifically in these things. Now before we continue, there are some things that I wanted to share with you really quickly. Understanding that when we talked about um, verse sixteen to twenty-eight, all the way from the time when the, the, the people were questioning him and they're wanting a sign, all of that was because of a, a lack of, of no faith. They did not believe that Jesus was the son of God, they didn't believe in a promise, they didn't believe that he was who they were waiting for, they had no faith and they had absolutely no trust. And we see that in verse sixteen, they showed the lack of faith and trusted Jesus and why they did or said these things. And we also know that the woman, she also was more focused on the, where Jesus came from versus Jesus himself, so she didn't even have any faith. So it's dangerous that we don't have any faith or trust in Jesus, who he says he is or even the words that come from his mouth. And we have to remember that Jesus responds with the entire lamp story because he wanted them to see. If they would allow themselves to have the faith and know that the su- faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things yet seen, that they haven't seen yet, maybe he, you know, he wasn't the way that they wanted him to see, but maybe they would open their hearts and their minds to receive his light. But because they were so focused on the darkness, they were missing out on him. So let's continue and close out the chapter. Verse eleven, verse, Luke chapter eleven, verse thirty-seven. And as he spoke, a certain Pharisee asked him to dine with him. So he went in and sat down to eat. And when the Pharisees saw it, he marvelled that he had not first washed before dinner. Then the Lord said to him, now you Pharisee, make the outside of the cup and dish clean, but your inward part is full of greed and wickedness. Foolish ones, did not he who made the outside make the inside also? But rather give arms of such things as you have, then indeed all things are clean to you. But woe to you Pharisees, for you tithe, mint, rue, all manners of herbs and, and pass by justice and the love of God. These you ought to have done without leaving the others undone. Woe to you Pharisees, for you love the best seats in the market, marketplace, synagogues and greetings. Woe to you scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for you are like gr- graves which are not seen and the men who walk over them are not aware of them. Then one of the lawyers answered and said to him, teacher, by saying these things, you reproach us also. And he said, woe to you also lawyers, for you load men with burdens, hard to bear and you yourselves do not touch the burdens with one of your fingers. Woe to you, for you build the tombs of the prophets and your fathers killed them. In fact, you bear witness that you approve the deeds of your fathers, for they indeed killed them and you build their tombs. Therefore, the wisdom of God also said, I will send them prophets and apostles and some of them will kill and persecute. That the blood of the prophets which was shed from the foundation of the world may be required of this generation. From the blood of Abel to the blood of Zechariah, who perished between the altar and the temple, yes, I say to you, it shall be required of this generation. Woe to you lawyers, for you have taken away the key of knowledge, you did not enter in yourselves and those who were entering in, you hindered. Jesus is letting these Pharisees know, so they are in darkness. And we know that Jesus was just talking about light. And he's talking to a group of people that are in darkness. And it's ironic that these people are, these people that he's talking to are actually individuals who believe that they are in light. They believe that they have already received, that they will already be saved, that they have already arrived. And he's letting them know that these individuals, for instance, the Pharisees were saying that Jesus didn't wash his hands before dinner. And Jesus was saying, it's interesting that you would have me wash my hands and that's important to you. But it's not important to you that your heart be clean. The inward part of you would be clean, the inside of the cup. You're worried about the outside, how the outside look and the appearance of how things should look, but you're not concerned about what the inside should be looking like. And Jesus is saying, why don't you clean what's inside of your heart? Stop cheating the people that you work with, stop lying to people that you're around, stop being jealous of your friends. Why not, why not clean the inside and then focus on the outside? And so when people place, and that, that's something that I have a difficulty understanding sometimes is that people would wanna place a standard on someone based off of the outside and the way that they look. But they don't understand that it's some, it's more important to us. God is more concerned with our hearts and our inward state before he's worried about the outside. Because you won't do something unless you have the love for God. You won't abandon an item of clothing unless you love God first. And so it's important for people to not put a burden on you and place a burden on you. Or even he's saying to the lawyers that they would, you know, try to tell people what they should do and folk, and, and, you know, beat them with the law all the time, oh, you need to do this, you need to do that, but they don't do it themselves. And so it's important for us to know, as we're becoming intimate, more intimate with Jesus, that we have a relationship with Jesus, that he would be the one to give us instructions on where to go, how to go and when to do it. Because it's based off of your relationship that you will have to answer for. But these individuals who already had truth, disregarded truth and then placed a different truth on these people, Jesus had a problem with that and that was a stirring up and indignation and, and it, it, he wasn't happy about these things. Um, and so that's what was going on in, in these verses that we just read. In verse fifty-three, and he said these things to them, and the scribes and the Pharisees began to assail him vehemently and to cross-examine him about many things. They were lying in wait for him and seeking to catch him in something he might say that they might accuse him. So even after Jesus gave them the light, he told them the truth. You know, everything that they were hiding in the darkness and all the things that they kept away from Jesus, they thought that Jesus didn't know anything about. Jesus put it all out there. And now they're trying to have a back and forth and, and they're cross-examining Jesus and they're trying to accuse him. And so understand that in your moments with Jesus and your intimate journey with him and when you're getting to know him, that you will have people that will try to put a, a standard on you, that you should look a certain way, that you should talk a certain way, that you're too young or you're too old, or maybe where you came from isn't where God. They don't believe that that's where, I'm sorry guys, they don't believe that that's where somebody who is godly should come from. Or maybe your path doesn't line up with where you're supposed to go. I just want you, in your walk with Jesus, to understand that you are more than a conqueror and that you are the son of God and anything that you want in life is possible. Any, any destiny that God has for you is for you and nothing and no one can separate you from that. Believe that your relationship with him and you pouring yourself into his word and everything that he has for you is all that you need. So I pray that today that we would recognize that Jesus is who we need, we just need to have faith in him. Because we saw that the people that didn't have faith in him, we saw how it happened and the things that happen when you don't have faith and when you don't trust. And when we don't feed ourselves with more of him, what will come of it? So let's pray. Father God, I thank you so much for this word, I thank you for helping us to see differently. That we shall behold you, that we would see you face to face, that we would just trust in you and believe in everything that you've told us, oh God. Father, give us strength, give us clarity and help us to let go of the things that are distracting us from you. Help us to let go of things that are not of you, Father God. And help us to understand that we are more than conquerors in you and that you are fighting for us and that we fight, we come from a place of victory because we are your children. We pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen. I pray that you all have a blessed New Years. And I can't wait to see you next week, it'll be twenty seventeen, it'll be two thousand seventeen. I pray that you have a blessed, blessed New Year, have a great one.